Oh, we got to wait for the.
Reporting in progress.
There we go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 26th meeting of the Westford Select Board. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as we do, led by Chris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Republic, where it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. I'll just let folks know that we are going to do a reflection on town meeting and town meeting planning. It really is our first agenda up, so if you have comments related to that, we invite them then. So let's start with any other open forum announcements. It looks like you've got one to start with.
I do, yes. Very happy to welcome Michael Edwards, who I have appointed to the Assistant Town Manager of Strategic Operations, who started yesterday, and he came back for a second day and is at your board meeting, so that's a great start. He's getting his feet wet, meeting a lot of people. He was actually at town meeting on Saturday and joined us for a department head meeting last Wednesday, so he's really hitting the ground running. And then also wanted to congratulate Jeff Morissette, who I promoted and appointed to Assistant Town Manager for Land Use and Economic Development.
Good. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
It's good to have you here.
Good to be here.
Any other comments from the board for open forum?
Just to be clear, because I know that there's been some concern about, you have a bunch of problems. We now got two Assistant Town Managers. We're not actually backfilling Jeff's spot, so the head count has not changed, so this is a budget neutral, a head count neutral act. But welcome to our newest company, new Mike. Yeah, welcome, Mike, to your new job, and congratulations to Jeff.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, and this format is of having two Assistant Town Managers. It's done in a couple towns, including, where are you coming from?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So it's been a winning formula for a bunch of towns. Anything else, anything else from the public for open forum, knowing that we're going to move right into town meeting discussion? Okay. Well, we'll move then to our 707 Agenda Item, which is the Annual Town Meeting Review. Why don't we start with a discussion of the date? I know there's a number of concerned, and welcome, Madame Moderator. Any, why don't we start with the discussion of the date, because I know there's been quite a lot of public input and discussion around the date. And let me just start off by thanking Kristin and Dr. Chu at the schools and everybody over the weekend, past couple days, running through and trying to find any conflicts to help us try to find the most inclusive date that we can. And Kristin, how would you like to lead us through that selection process?
Sure. And Ms. Moderator, if you'd like to have any input as well, feel free. Just for the public's knowledge, the Select Board did meet the Friday before town meeting in anticipation that we may have reached the capacity on Saturday, which we did. I think, again, we're very proud of the way that we check people in and the operations and the way they went. It's unfortunate that we did go over capacity and we had to call the meeting. But at that meeting of the Select Board that Friday, we did review many dates to have a town meeting on the field at Westford Academy and reviewing the challenges or the constrictions related to that. There were dates of April 27th, or May 4th, or other dates later in June. There's a myriad of events in mid to late May, as well as early June, related to Apple Blossom Festival, cotillion, graduation, other events. So at that Friday meeting, the Select Board did state that they would prefer May 4th. Since you made that announcement, there have been various groups who have come forward and saying that there is challenges to May 4th. I think there's going to be challenges to any date that we select. But we have been bouncing around April 27th, which is a Saturday, or May 4th, which is a Saturday as well. And I shared with the board yesterday, and just a myriad of things that are occurring on each of those dates. I don't know if you want me to go through them in detail. We're also just pulling together what are the types of things we need to do to plan related to additional clickers, additional chairs, check-in, tents, wiring, refreshments, all of those things. So I just want to let the board and the members of the public know, we started that at 8:00 AM yesterday morning, and we're not, you know, we're planning another town meeting, whether it be either of these dates or another date, to ensure that the public has the most efficient and successful town meeting moving forward.
Just for completeness, then maybe we'll come back to the two dates that got the most focus. We did receive, I think, every possible suggestion under the sun for ways that we might do this and took them seriously. There were challenges with considering an evening meeting, given that you've got a time constraint at the beginning and end. If you think you're going to have high attendance, it gets very difficult to schedule the start time, given that people work and we have to give them the opportunity to come home. And we know that the initial 1 through 4 articles is going to take a substantial amount of time to discuss. As Kristin mentioned, if we consider later days, there are a bunch of conflicts, plus we're getting awfully close to the beginning of the fiscal year. Again, we're planning for a fiscal year that begins July 1st. So when we looked at all the options and considered everything, it really came back to April 27th and May 4th. And I don't know if you just want to mention some of the conflicts that we heard for each. I think, at least, we'll have this discussion here, but in some discussion already, I think it looks like the 27th maybe has fewer conflicts, might be more manageable, but maybe if you could just list those, then we can go to discussion with the board and get input from the public.
So there's just general family obligations, dance recitals, first convenions, sporting events on both dates. Specific to the town, the Westford Recycling Commission on the 27th has their electronics and more event from 9:00 to 1:00 at the DPW Garage. Roden Bush has their annual town yard sale from 8:00 to 1:00 at Abbott School, and there's the Zero Waste Day at Blanchard from 9:00 to 1:00. On the 4th, there's the Home Hazardous Waste Day up at the DPW Garage. There's the Stony Brook Theater Festival, which is during the day, and then there's the Westford Academy Performance, which I believe begins at 7:30 that evening. So both of those days do have a myriad of town events ongoing. There may be others that I'm not aware of, that the board may be aware of, or members of the public may be aware of.
Why don't we just talk about it as a board and see if there's any comments people have between those two dates as we've, or really anything people would like to discuss?
I guess one question is, do we have any option to combine hazardous materials with, we got two collection days for basically waste recycling. Can that be combined into one day on whichever one we don't pick?
So I know that Home Hazardous Waste Day cannot be moved. We've already scheduled that with the vendor. I would defer to Mr. Teal, if you would allow him to speak, related to the other events as the Westford Recycling.
Good, yeah, welcome Ken.
The two events really are bipolar. They cannot be combined. Because the electronics is a huge event in town, as many of you know, and have seen the long lines that we have there. The household hazardous waste is also substantial, but it's all-consuming. There's no way to have a parallel universe with those two. We also sponsor the Zero Waste Day, and there's just, there's a lot of stuff happening on the 27th. I realize you have a tough decision, but it's not, it's not an easy fix either way, dealing with vendors and scheduling vendors. And what would end up happening is, we would either lose the date, or you'd lose people voting. You know, me, for example. I'm everywhere.
I know what hazardous waste is. I know what the electronics is, but what is Zero Waste Day and what does that?
Zero waste is something that's happening across the country now, and we've now adopted it. And what it is, is creating an opportunity to find a better use for products than throwing them out. And so there'll be a furniture collection, there'll be vendors. There'll be vendor for furniture collection, for example, for musical instruments, for bicycles, for all of those types of things that people don't want to hold on to anymore, but it's making sure that they're put to a better use.
Was this just an informational kind of thing?
Not at all. No, it's really a drop-off, and it's something, and they're enormously successful. Tinsborough did their first last year, and they were mobbed. They were very successful. We're following the same model, and we think it's going to be great, but it's part of what we want to do. We want to get stuff out of the trash. We want to find a better use, a reuse, and, you know, helping people make good choices, so that's what the focus is.
We will actually get a full presentation from Ken a little bit tonight. If it's related to scheduling, please.
I just wanted to understand what that entailed, so I could put that in context with our scheduling and what we may or may not have to bump.
Yep. And John, did you have a comment, question, Ken? Okay.
Well, we're talking about 2,000 people out of 18,000 voters at town meeting. That's what we're talking about. So you've got 16,000 remaining voters that can take their stuff to your event. And then I've been to Tinsborough, and they accept, they never asked me where I was from. They accepted the stuff I was bringing in. And then, if I had to hold on to it for a little bit longer. So I'm not, I understand that issue, but I just want to kind of put it in perspective of what we're talking about in terms of impact.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Ken. Welcome me back in a bit. Chris?
Yeah, so, you know, we did get a lot of comments from people via email, and I think, for me, one of the consistent themes that I took out of those emails was that Saturday just does not work for a lot of people. And I'm one of those people too, and, you know, you sort of another resident. I really think we should be looking at Sunday as an alternative, instead of holding this meeting on Saturday. I think we're going to be able to get a lot more voters there on a Sunday than trying to wrestle around all the different events that are happening in town, not to mention all the, you know, the sporting things that all these young families are, you know, heavily invested in, and, you know, can't easily say, "I'm just not going to go to Johnny's soccer game." It's a little bigger than that, so that's where I would land.
Yep. Andrew?
So I guess, first of all, I think sporting events happen on Sundays as well, because I do go, I do remember going to sporting events on Sundays. Secondly, I don't think it's as simple as that, Chris. I mean, you have people who go to church and religious ceremonies, and, you know, they're, you know, they're going to be impacted, and I can't say one way or the other, who, you know, how many more people will be impacted one way or the other. But I think Sundays creates its own host of problems as well. And I think at the end of the day, we're not going to get a day that is, you know, everybody's going to be able to make, or that is conducive to everybody, and that some folks just, you know, whatever, aren't going to be there. So I just think that, you know, that we have to think about that. And then, and then the other thing I guess we just have to think about is Sundays, and, you know, I'm thinking about sort of what we, the charges we have, and if we have people in on Sundays, it's not just overtime, it's time and a half.
It depends on the contract, but also another, you know.
And vendors and.
On Saturday as well, if we had the date as Saturday and it was pouring rain, we would be using Sunday because we are renting a lot of things, but just throwing that on the table.
That's, that's what's the other thing, is that we have a rain date for Sunday, which we have used in the past. We did use. So I don't know that that solves our problem.
Exactly my point. All three of them are exactly my points that, yeah.
And so we've mentioned, we talked about, and we talked, I did call and talk to a couple people at schools and other places, and not that it was a comprehensive survey, but it did get complicated in terms of also having sports, scheduled religious services and other things. It wasn't clear to me at the end that it was going to be much simpler or less conflicted. So I respect the suggestion. I think it is a complicated balancing act. John, do you have a question?
I was just kind of thinking out of the box about having split the town meeting, but then we'd have to set up a second time. But, you know, if you waited till, say, 1:00 and headed till 5:00 or 6:00, knowing that you're probably going to have to have a spot on as a possibility, that way that people have all these morning events, all this collection and stuff, they could do that. But I kind of agree with everybody else. I mean, it's a, it's a, I don't know. There's really no easy solution here.
I'm sorry, Madame Moderator?
I just want to, it's been said, but I want to emphasize it, because from my point of view, one of the most important things is that if we have it on Sunday, we have no possible rain date until the following week. And that's significant, especially at this time of year, because if we schedule it for a Sunday and it's a rainout, we, there's, we're really in a box. We probably have to take everything down and put it up the following week, and that would only be doable if we had it on the 28th, because after the 5th, there are no dates until June 15th that the school is available. So that's a really significant factor, I think, as between having it on a Saturday or a Sunday. And I also would be nervous about scheduling it to start in the afternoon, because I'm not even sure we can finish in one day. So if we start in the afternoon, there's no question that we have another day outside where we have to worry about the weather and making sure that we remain, everything, everything remains set up.
I got another question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
What if we did just the town budget?
We have too many other things that are town-sensitive.
I know that, but, you know, phase one.
Okay, so I'm, on Saturday, I was concerned about finishing the budget in the morning. So that was at least three hours we had in the morning. I wasn't sure, because of the four articles and the complexity of it, and the number of people who had already contacted me with questions and possible amendments, I wasn't even sure we'd finish that in the morning. So, again, if we schedule only the budget for the afternoon, we're still going to need almost a full day for everything else, unless things go a lot faster than I think they're going to, and we certainly have a lot of other really important things, including the MBTA article that have to go forward.
We've got a little bit of flex on that one, but, yeah, you're right. I guess I'm getting the point that the important thing, what's really hitting the fan here is the budget. If we did the budget, and then we adjourned to a certain day afterwards to finish up, is that budget effective? We've already voted it in, and we haven't, we haven't closed town meeting, or we haven't adjourned. We just adjourned to a date certain, but we passed the budget. And is that legal? And could we do that if, I mean, we're getting wrapped around the axle on this thing, I think, I understand, but I'm just looking at another option.
Exploring options, yeah.
Yeah, if, if it really gets, it could be a tough thing to do.
I see what you, I see what you mean, so I guess the question is, whether, no matter when we start, if we're only able to get through a certain number of articles, I guess you can adjourn and continue to another day.
I think we can do that. We probably want to run that by town council, but I think we can adjourn to a date certain, as John said.
But it's just finding another date outside at WA where we can fit people.
That's right.
There's certainly a benefit to trying to get through the regular business of the town on these best weekends.
I'd be willing to bet, if we were able to finish the budget and that one thing, and then we had it adjourned to a date certain, we wouldn't have the crowd on the date certain.
Well, we certainly hope that we'll have high level of engagement.
We would want that to be available.
So, okay, so I think I understand, I think I understand your, and you reminded me, Angela, of another point, which is, I did talk to a number of families that said it was better for them to target one weekend as being the weekend they were focusing on being available, instead of having the potential of two weekends if you had a situation where you might have a meeting and adjourn to the following weekend. So just another, another point that came up in a bunch of conversations.
And could I also mention, just because I've gotten a couple of emails about it, the possibility of having it on an evening, weeknight evening after work. The problem with that is, first of all, I don't think we could finish it in one or even two evenings. We'd probably have to have three evenings, so people would have to come over and over again. Secondly, we're going to be outside at the end of April or the beginning of May, so it seems like people are not going to be able to, I don't think it's wise to think that people can sit outside for three hours at that time of year, in the dark. Not, not in the dark, there are lights on the field, but they'd have to get there from their cars and everything in the dark. It just doesn't seem like a doable thing to me.
I'd also be very concerned about the start time, because if people work, we can't start before 7:00. You've got remote parking.
Right.
Inevitably, you're going to have some.
You're not going to start too late.
You're going to have some spin-up, and it's going to make it very short.
Right. And the biggest complaint we have about town meeting in the fall, which is in the evening, is that people with kids can't get there because they have to stay home with their kids, get homework done, take care of little ones, put them to bed. So it just doesn't seem like a good choice to me at all.
And Chris, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, so, you know, you raised the point about if it does rain, you know, we have to have this rain date, and, you know, now we have all this equipment that's sitting out potentially on the field on Saturday, right? That somebody would have to do something with and protect, or even pull inside, and then we have to set it back up on Sunday. I mean, I strongly think that, and I don't know, obviously financially, what the numbers would be, that we should look into having a tent, so that we can hedge against the rain situation, because I really don't want to ask the public to come back yet again, right? Either in two scenarios. One, it rains and we don't even start, but even worse, we start and then it rains in the middle of the proceedings. Can you imagine? I don't want to be there. I think we should make our best effort to look to see if we can provide tent, not only for protection against the rain, but other, just maybe, you know, wind and other cold, for example, and see if we can make this work. And to that end, if we can do that, I'll go back to the Sunday. I really think the Sunday is the better choice for the majority of the residents of this town.
Yeah, I think I've heard your point on that. Just in terms of tenting, so that if we're planning for 2,000 or more people, just a visual reminder of what graduation at Westford Academy looks like, bleachers are full, the bottom of the, where the field is, is full too. So the idea of finding a way to tent that entire space is difficult. The idea of having a tent that might have visibility, so if it's a light rain, or there's certain people that need to, like, I can imagine wanting to have a tent for a bunch of reasons, but I don't know if we could guarantee that we could have it in a downpour, for example, and have it sufficiently tented for that purpose.
I think we need to get some more information on that, but I agree with you. I think there are some impediments to making it work, but I think it's something we should investigate.
Yeah. No, I fully agree. We should try to make it as accessible as we can in all the ways that we can, so I don't know if there's any comment on that.
Well, just when we had the meetings outside during the pandemic, they, they don't actually set up the electronic equipment that could be damaged until right before we know we're going to have it. So it's not so much the equipment as if it's, if it's just raining too hard for us to be out there. I kind of feel like you're going to need an Astrodome if you're really going to, because it's a big area. It's a really big area, and you can't put the tent poles in the turf, in the artificial turf, so it has to be something that goes outside of the football field itself.
Well, they make, they make, actually these days, they make like concrete weights to hold the tent down. It costs more money to rent them, but you can do above-ground tenting now.
I guess what we'll say is, let's, let's think about that, but if we're trying to make an accessible situation that would be durable to substantial rain, I think we have a hard time tenting it in a way that you could make that work. But let's, let's investigate if we find an option that will boost likelihood of continuing on the day and/or accessibility, I think we should do it, so.
Yeah, and I've already contacted Jeff Goodwin, the facilities director, and have inquired about the tent. We definitely could do those Easy Up tents for certain areas for people who need relief. It will likely be more challenging to do the entire tent, and I didn't even think about the bleachers, so thank you for bringing that up today as well. So we will look at that for sure, again, looking at all options.
Just one more time, can we repeat, what's the 27th conflicts?
So the 27th is the Westford Recycling Electronics and More from 9:00 to 1:00 at the town DPW Garage. Roden Bush's annual town yard sale at Abbott from 8:00 to 1:00, so we'd lose that satellite parking. And Zero Waste Day at Blanchard from 9:00 to 1:00.
I think one thing that we would do is we would ask, so, hard to know this, and we haven't asked them yet, but once we pick a day, we would ask town sports leagues, anyone playing an event, to strongly consider the idea of moving whatever events they have to another time. I know that's not easy to do for everybody. I know from my time coaching that sometimes it rained and they found other ways to do things. So it's, it's something we're going to ask, and so I'm just thinking of the field. I think we would approach Roden Bush and say, "Is there an opportunity to look for another time, because we'd like to use that spot? And we'd like your event to be successful and not have the overlap." But, thank you for that. And then I think the other date.
Well, that's where I was coming from, is that we've got problems on both, and we've got recycling slash trash on both. But if it comes down to one or the other, you know, Roden Bush maybe could move that date, but the theater can't. We've got other schools coming in on that competition. We've got, what, 758 families tied up with that all day? And to me, that, if I have to make a pick, the 4th stays open, and we go with 27th for town meeting. This is just least disruptive.
Yeah, I think that's where I am too.
I think that's where I come up to, is that while it's going to be disruptive for certain folks, and it always will be, I think the 27th is, is less disruptive than the 4th, and, and the theater is really the reason that I'm choosing that is, because it does, it doesn't just involve the town of Westford, it involves, you know, outside towns, schools, et cetera, coming into our community. So I think, you know, for me, I think the 27th is the lesser of two evils, is how I would put it.
Other, other comments from the board, and then we can entertain comments from the public.
I just got another question.
Yep.
Back before we changed town meeting to March, what did that look like? In other words, when did we normally have that?
The first Saturday in May.
First Saturday in May.
And it ran into exactly the same conflicts.
This is exactly where we moved it, to March, because this was a problem.
Yeah, I know. We're back to where we were.
Well, unfortunately, because of what happened, I mean, I think, if anything, this is a clear indication of why we want to continue to have town meeting in March, and just do it in a way that works for everybody. I don't, I don't know what that way is. We're going to have to think about that, because if we're going to have 2,000 people coming to town meeting, or 2,500 people coming to town meeting, and it's going to be during a time of the year when it's got to be inside, we have to figure out how we're going to do that.
Yeah, hybrid town meetings.
I'm sorry?
Hybrid town meetings.
Well, you got to go to the state legislature for that.
I didn't say it was easy, but it's possible.
Yeah, and that's another thing we're receiving a lot of emails about, and I would like to take the opportunity to let people know that that's not our decision. That is a, and that, and that the town has already contacted our legislators about looking into this and trying to come up with a solution. There are two bills pending right now about allowing remote participation at town meeting, subject to rules and regulations that will be drafted by the Attorney General. So it's not something that's going to happen next week.
I've been talking about it four years from now.
Well, I think that's realistic.
It's already been underway for a long time, too.
I think that's realistic, so in the meantime, we have to figure out something else.
And Angela, I think it came up during this whole process of considering, in a very diligent way you did, all these suggestions and questions, I think there is a remote accommodation for disability.
Yes, for disabled persons only. The ADA Act is what has an exception in it that allows us to provide for remote participation for people who can't attend town meeting as a result of a disability. And I think we're in the process of setting up a method by which people with that issue can proceed through the town channels to set something up that will allow them to participate. But that's not 2,000 people, obviously.
Exactly. No, it was just, just a side note, and it was exciting for me to realize that, first said, to realize there are people who are disabled who routinely were not able to come, and then happy that there is this provision that will allow us to provide accessibility, so.
But to be clear, we don't have something ready to go now.
We may, by the time we have town meeting. I actually sat with, I sat with staff today to kick off the process. I can't guarantee that we will have it by the April or the May date, but we put those wheels in motion today.
And the reason is, it's made very easy by the Attorney General's Office and the ADA Act. It's made very easy for us to do, unlike what would happen if everybody's going to be afforded that opportunity. That'll be different.
Scott?
Another question, this is also looking at, looking at this, because of your research. But I would suggest, I would just ask, if you are out there tonight and you would like to take advantage of this. I had a request came in on Thursday before town meeting on Friday. We can't turn it that fast. So please let, you know, Kristin know if you want an accommodation soonish, so that we can actually have it in place when the time comes.
And I don't want to complicate matters even more, but just tonight, I got an email from another moderator. In Wayland, they have some methodology, I'll look into it more tomorrow, where they do a survey ahead of time to have people respond as to RSVP, as to whether or not they're going to come to town meeting. And while it's not binding, if you say you're going to come and you don't, that's fine. If you say you're not going to come and you do, that's fine too. It at least gives them some idea of how many people they can expect. So I'm going to, I'm going to look into that starting tomorrow.
We have a tool that we can use if needed.
I was going to say, don't we have our survey tool that can do that?
I'd be really interested to know if they have enough history to be able to correlate the response rate attendance.
Yes, that's, that's what I'd be interested in as well, but they've been doing.
The response rate might be low and the attendance might be high.
I guess they've been doing it for a few years, so.
It got away. Okay, that's cool. We should do that.
Yep.
Are you, so who's following up on that? Because I am interested in that information. Will you be able to reach out?
Yes, absolutely, and they've actually given me a contact there, which I'll turn over, because I don't, I don't need to be doing more than making sure it exists and turning it over to somebody to look into further. But I, I think that it's something we're going to want to look into.
If you do ask the question, could you ask them how they distribute that survey?
Yes, exactly. That's, that's what I would want to know. How reliable, how do they do it and how reliable is it?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think we're ready if there are any comments from the public about things we should be thinking about, specific comments on the date, and Ken, if you, do you have a comment? Yeah, come on up, Ken. Yep.
Given that I've got a.
Ken, if you've got a comment as a resident, if you could just give your name and address.
Oh, Ken Teal, 3 Beaver Dam Drive, Westford. If I had to choose between the two of them, and I have a stake in both of them, the 4th would be much better to hold town meeting than the other date. I mean, we're going to have to do something miraculously one way or the other with each one of them, but that would be my vote as a resident from 3 Beaver Dam Drive.
And that's because of the complexity of moving the various ways and safety things.
And recognizing the vendors, and recognizing the participation of our residents in these events.
Okay.
Okay?
I understand. Thanks, Ken. Would you like to go, and we've got, if you're offsite, if you're online, we know you're there, we're going to come to you next.
Bill Belada, 52 Running Road.
Yep. Yep.
Um, you're talking about the 27th or the fourth. What happens if it rains on the 27th? The rain date's the 28th and it rains on the 28th? Would, can you then go to the fourth or then you have to pick a whole new date?
If you'd like to respond, yeah.
This is, this is a good reason to pick the 27th because it allows us, if 27 and 28 are blowouts, to go to the following weekend. If we pick the fourth and fifth and it's a blowout, the next available date is June 15th because of things that are going on at WA. So I, I think that's a significant point as well.
And I guess I would comment that we're then in the situation that we're in every year for town meeting, which is if it rains two days in a row, you could be exposed to that.
Yeah. And then how does that impact the vote on May 7th? How does, does it have to be before the vote?
No.
It does not. So the May 7th is going to happen on May 7th. I mean, the election, of course, May 7th is going to happen on May 7th. The election's going to happen on May 7th. The ballot is going to happen on May 7th regardless.
Thanks.
Okay. Why don't we go online?
So we have Emily Teller. Emily, I don't know if you want me to read your comment or if you want to speak. I just allowed you to be unmuted.
You can read it, Kristin. Thank you very much.
So planning for about 2,000 voters and non-voters and visitors, please talk about having jumbotrons or multiple, about six screens. So people in the back can feel as they're participating in town meeting. Also many microphones for people to ask questions in favor, opposed questions at the front, middle and rear. Thank you. So my understanding is that in the past, when you had it outside, there were no screens. We can certainly look into that. I know the visibility is very challenging when you don't have the shade over that. But certainly can, can get many microphones, but would take it. I was not here for those outdoor meetings, so I will take whatever feedback others have.
Yeah, I think maybe we would, we would ask the moderator to take that comment on board. It sounds like this is an issue independent of date, which is just if we're having it outside, how do we create as accessible and inclusive an experience as possible? So thank you, Emily.
There's an anonymous attendee. I don't think we take anon- anonymous comments.
Uh, we, we prefer not to. So if, if, if you have a comment and you could log in with your name or put in the comment what your name is, we'd be happy to acknowledge you.
All right. And then there's one more. Is there currently a method to vote by proxy from Molly Winder? No, under state law, you have to vote in person during that timeframe and there's no proxy voting.
Uh, and, and that's a good question. I had that question from another person today. Is it possible that we could do early voting, maybe in a kiosk at the same site as town meeting because people are engaged, they're there, we can get access? And could you just say again, the rule is sometimes we do have early voting and it's allowed. In this case, we can't do early voting?
So you can only do early voting if it's an election. So there's a ballot. You cannot do early voting at town meeting via state law.
Oh, I understand. Okay. So the, the question was then, can we do early voting for the May 7th?
Yes, I believe we are doing early voting for the May 7th ballot.
Okay. And the question that I had from a constituent was, is there any way someone, you could, you could co-locate and have like a voting kiosk? If town meeting is going on, people could, could do both because they're, they're there, they're engaged.
No, early voting is not at that, on that Saturday. I think it's.
Okay. So the early voting window doesn't span that time?
Correct.
Okay. But people could come, I'm sorry to spring this on you, but so the early voting window is, it's, it's a number of days before and people can come to town hall and vote if they're unable to vote on that day?
On the ballot, yes. Not on town meeting.
On the ballot, not on town meeting.
Correct.
On the ballot.
Yes. Okay. And then the person who said they were the anonymous person is Jessica Collins of Ten Polly Road. Regarding John's suggestion, opening the meeting to vote on the first four articles and leaving the meeting open to a later date, wouldn't someone be able to reopen the budget debate on the later date? I'd like the moderator to answer that because she had already made that determination ahead of time.
I, I did make a statement about motions for reconsideration not being accepted unless they were posed on the basis of a technical error in the original vote taken. And I think that would apply to an adjourned and reopened meeting as well.
Yeah, it's entirely possible with the best of intentions, we would start the meeting and if it's a long meeting with a lot of content, we have to carry over. We've done that in the past. So a good, good question. Please.
Sorry, one question. How many are you planning to show up? How many people are you planning for?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And I don't know, Angela, if you've, if you've got a number in mind. Something bigger than we saw last time.
Yeah, so it seems as though there were probably close to 2,000 people that wanted to vote at the meeting on Saturday. So we were talking about this today and I think to be 100% certain, we probably want to plan for 2,500. A hundred percent certain is not a phrase I should use because there's just no knowing. I, I mean, we could plan for 2,500 and it be 3,000, just like we planned for 1,600 and it was 2,000. We could plan for 2,500 and end up being 1,500. So it, it's really hard to know, which is one reason that surveying technique would be very helpful for us.
Thank you. No, I, I mean, just my, my opinion. I think it's a great answer. It's a reasonable choice and, you know, we'll explore all contingencies. How would we handle it if there were more? We'd, we'll explore all those as we approach the date. Other comments either online or here about date selection before we close that piece out?
There's nothing online.
Okay. Um, is this a motion and vote type of thing?
I think we need to, we, yeah, yes. We need to get the word out as soon as possible. So.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we, uh, move, move or, I, I move that we, our new date for town meetings should be April 27th, Saturday, April 27th, starting at 9:00 AM on the fields at Westford Academy with a rain date of April 28th and if needed, a follow-up rain date for May 4th.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay. All those in favor? Chris? Oh, we're actually, we're all here. We're all here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Okay. It's for one. So the date will be the 27th. As the whole sequence of things as Andrea described. Okay. Yes, Angela. Yep.
In case people don't know, I just want to make it clear that everybody in this room, including me, would like to have the date for town meeting be at a date and time that's convenient for everybody, that will allow everyone to participate. And barring that, which would be three o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday, I guess, we have to have the date that seems like the best. And that's what we're all doing is trying to figure that date out, figure out the date that the most people can come. And it's going to inconvenience some people and I'm really sorry, but we have to choose a date as soon as possible and get it out there so people can make their arrangements.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So we do have time on the agenda now for a more general reflection on town meeting. I have a couple of things, but before I do, anything from the board, we'd like to just raise as issues. Sure?
So before I raise as an issue, despite the fact that we had to call the meeting, I would really like to applaud and praise our entire town staff and volunteers led by Kristin, Lori from our town clerk's office, Chief Chambers and the police who were all out there in the rain and the cold and directing traffic. You know, everything I've heard, the check-in went smoothly. Nobody had any complaints about that. You know, the, the parking worked. The police made decisions on the fly. When every parking lot got full, they were like, okay, we go to water. Okay, we go to Abbott. So I, you know, I think it's a testament to the dedication and the commitment that our town employees and staff here. And I just want to applaud them all and publicly thank them all for all their hard work that they did on Saturday. So that's where I'd like to start.
And absolutely, and I would like to also recognize Angela, our moderator, for taking what was a very difficult town meeting experience and really embracing it, getting behind the changes, doing the research, finding a way to really get, I think it was really a best in class, a really excellent, excellent event.
I mean, if nothing else.
And that's not easy to do, to, to take what clearly didn't go well and turn into something that was really a shining example.
I mean, participatory democracy is alive and well in Westford for anybody who's doubting it.
Yeah.
I, I was, you know, talking to somebody that was stuck at Abbott lot. I said that the buses were picking up people walking. So did we, all the people that Andy mentioned, but you know, those bus drivers were just, had their, their hearts, their heads in it. And again, on the fly, you know, where do we find a lot? Where do I find people? The parking car? I'll pick them up. Let, let them walk. The town really came together for that one. And amazing, you know, think about, we've moved 600 people in their cars out of that lot in, in like 20 minutes. It was amazing. The, the police work there was incredible.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Well deserved. Yes, Scott.
So that being said, you know, just sort of, you know, a couple of things I, I, you know, thinking about and thinking about in terms of the next one. You know, one of the things that I think we might think about is, you know, in terms of parking, you know, in terms of towns, town staff, all of us who are elected officials and in for parking, maybe there's a, you know, we all gather at town hall or the library early in the morning and we take a bus over and that frees up probably, you know, 50 parking spaces that won't be used and, and we shuttle over. I think there's that. I think probably if we're, I, I know the buses worked really well and, and picked up people. But if we're going to be using, you know, four or five satellite places, we might think about that we might need to have more buses and buses dedicated to whatever particular area is being picked up on. Somebody who reached out to me had a suggestion, which is could you have actual loading places so that people say, say for example, just, you know, Abbott, okay? And people who just drive to Abbott, park their cars there and then take the bus from Abbott over to the field. And this way, you know, they're not stuck driving to someplace, finding out, oops, there's no parking here. Now I have to go to park someplace else. So I think that, you know, maybe that's something we could think about is having designated pickup and drop-off places as well. You know, I, I did think having it on the field and in our past experience, I, I do think we have to sort of look at the sound and visibility for people. Certainly, I know, I think we had like six or eight microphones last time. I know there were two in the back, two sort of in the middle and two in the front and five. But again, looking, you know.
You can't, if you're in the way back.
You can't see if you're in the way back. So.
And we only had three or 400 seats set up. So this will be more like 700 seats set up in the field.
And they can't.
We could have them closer, but there's, we did, we had the COVID separation.
Yeah, wait, let's, I'm sorry, but we'll do one more time.
I just think things logistically to look at when we're having it, you know, when we're on the field in terms of making it so that people can hear and that people can see. Because I think being outside on the field is, presents a few more challenges. Maybe not more challenges, different challenges than you have when you're, when you're indoors. So.
Okay. John?
Just one other thing. You might want to reorient the entire arrangement so that you don't have the stage and, and main microphone at the end. You'd have it in the center and you'd have the, the bleachers in the back and then fan out the rest of the, that would narrow it.
It narrows the, the distance.
You have to check six so you don't have anybody back here doing anything. But anyway, just, you know, it would be one of those where you'd, I think it'd be a better arrangement. It's just a thought.
Okay, good. Scott, do you have a question?
I was thinking of, if we're going to use a, a, a screen of some sort, can we test it? Because the sort of glare.
Oh, yeah. We've tested it for sure.
We may want to have two or three, you know.
We actually already made inquiries about this before any of this happened and without thinking about outside, but we have a vendor we can inquire about it. We can also ask Kat. They've just been fabulous and they may have some knowledge of this as well. The big jumbotron screens are about, do you remember the cost? Kristin, it was about $6,600. I won't, I feel like it was about $6,600 was the cost we were quoted, just sort of off the cuff. It wasn't an exact estimate, but just so you know, that's, that's what we'll be talking about. Those are the huge screens like you see it.
That's to rent?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think good, good to think about though and maybe good to see if other towns with big crowds of other ideas or solutions, there may be a way to brief people on using devices they may have with them to help them, you know, have more access to what they're looking at. There may be some good solutions out there. Uh, other, other suggestions for next meeting. My 16-year-old daughter will bring the minivan to town hall next time. If you all want to meet with me. An hour ahead of time, we can ride over together.
I do have two people online. I don't, I don't know if you're taking public comments.
Yeah, sure.
So Emily Teller just says, thank you for the Westford Academy maintenance staff and janitors. Such a pleasant morning and team effort. Can the town rent the clickers versus paying for them? We are actually contacting other municipalities to borrow clickers. That's a common entity. So Mike Wells started that yesterday morning. We have many, many leads. So we're looking into that. And then Jamie Holmes says, does anyone have a count of spots at the schools? Maybe another place makes more sense and has more spots versus Robinson and Christopher Foley. Yes, Jeff Goodwin has all the spots counted out. I know the police department does as well. So I think that's why it makes sense to park at WA, park at Abbott first, shuttle in from there. And then if we need those other two satellite lots, go there. So we are looking into those logistics.
Yeah, and I know we were brain, maybe we don't want to cover it now. We were also brainstorming other places that we might be able to do part, remote parking and, and bring people in. So we will keep working that, that important issue. This is sort of a, a town meeting adjacent item, but I wanted to bring up the idea. I think we have heard from a number of people, concerns or questions about the, the various forms of government a town like Westford might have, like representative town government. I had a chance to, to speak with each of you individually over the past little bit. It seems like we have enough input that we should go ahead and do the first step, which would be to convene a town study group. The first official act, and Kristin, please correct me, if the town did decide to do this, would be a town meeting vote. It's a multi-step process. It would take a while. But the first thing we would typically do is pull together a study group that would sort of articulate the pluses and minuses, look at what other towns have gone through, the transition have done, come back and make a recommendation that might ultimately make its way to something that would happen at town meeting. But it seems like we've had that input enough that it would make sense for us to go ahead and, and go ahead and kick that off. We did it 15 or 16 years ago. Times have changed.
2009, I think.
2009. Times, times have changed, towns changed. So I wanted to float the idea with the board of, of considering going ahead and asking for volunteers to help in panel that committee. Yeah, Scott?
So I, I mean, I would caution again, I mean, if you want to do it, it's fine. It probably is time to look at it. But what I sensed from the comments from people was frustration that, you know, they, this didn't work out and, and wouldn't this work better? And I would just suggest if you think that representative democracy works really, really well, look at US Congress and see how well that works for you. Look at our own state house where you got one-party government and you make decisions slowly and badly there. So the fact that you get, you know, and if you vote for somebody who's your representative, they may not vote your way. So you may be sacrificing your vote in the end anyway. So I'm all for looking at it, but I think the real solution, if we want to value what we have, is work on the electronic, the remote precipitation to get a town meeting that's got, you know, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 people that we could do technically.
Yep. Yep, John?
Hand in your audience there.
Okay. What, what do we, if you don't mind, I'll just take a poll and we'll bring, we'll bring.
Well, I have one suggestion. Just go look at that report, Representative Town Meeting Committee report back in 2009. That give you all the reasons that we opted to stay with open town meeting. And that's a, that'd be a good start.
It's posted on the moderator's webpage. There's a link to it posted on my webpage. So people don't have to.
It's a great committee. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any other thoughts there? Yep, Chris?
So do you see as part of the charter of this committee, looking at alternatives like hybrid town meetings or are we going to tackle that as a separate initiative?
I think that's a separate issue because it's a state issue.
Uh, yeah, I was going to say we, I mean, that, that's a good thought. I think we, we would define the charter probably at a, at a different meeting so we could talk about it then. But it could, could very well make sense to have it be a split effort.
But that could have an effect on the, the recommendation. If you could do hybrid, then that would make open town meeting a lot more attractive, I would think.
I think that's true, but I think we have to be realistic about the fact that if hybrid is allowed, it's not going to be until the state house acts on that. And then they're going to have to pass rules and regulations for that. And I guess I don't see that happening in the, any, any time in the near future, given how slow our state legislature works. And so I guess, I know that it could have an impact upon whether or not people want open town meeting, but I, I don't know that that should be a deciding factor.
Well, it would be decided. It would just be a, yeah.
Yeah, I think the only action we might take would be to decide on a future agenda to, to flesh this out. We're not, we're not prepared to do that tonight. Uh, first Angela and then Diane. I, I didn't see you before.
I, I just want to point out that both of these things, changing our form of government so that we have a different type of, of legislator, legislative branch, and getting the remote voting thing through the, the state. legislative branch, and getting the remote voting thing through the state house are going to take a few years. They're both going to take a few years. So if we're pursuing them in parallel, if that's what people want to do, that's great. The only suggestion I would have is that there be somewhere for the people who are contacting us about doing remote voting, that we have the ability to direct them somewhere, whether it's to our state rep and state senator. That's probably the most logical thing to do, but we should be, I think, sending out a standard response that says this is being considered by the legislature, you need to let them know that you support it so that people are actually doing that, because it really doesn't do much good. It's not moving the thing along for them to contact us and say, you know, we think remote voting is important because we all think it's important too, but it's the legislature that's making that decision.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Kristen, aren't our state legislature and senator, aren't they coming to our meeting in April?
April twenty-third, yes.
You did tell me that.
There we go.
So certainly something to put on and perhaps give them a heads up.
Yes, they asked today for an agenda and that was one of them.
Well, here's one of the items for the agenda.
It was one of them and a meeting was one of them as well.
Okay.
I think Diane had.
Yeah, Diane, please.
Diane Wood, one twenty-two, Jepo, I'm probably echoing what Chris said and several other people said. Regardless of how you're going to, you know, set up, set up the committee, the charter just really needs to be clear. I think we all know there are multiple options that may be out there. Representative Town Meeting is one, you know, the House Bill three oh two five with remote is another. There are two other efforts that individual people have, are, you know, pushing forward locally in town here. So this committee could be scattered all over the place, it just needs to be really clear. And a lot of them are very time-consuming and people don't want to be spinning their wheels. In general, I agree with Angela. I've been sending everybody to I C R O's, you know, to Jim Job Representative and to Steve Cronin's office, you know, to pursue that. But if there is going to be a committee, the charter just needs to be really, really clear, you know, regarding what they're doing. And some are long-term, some are short-term, so people aren't spinning their wheels, so.
Great, thanks, Anne. Okay, I had another thought, but it doesn't really belong in this agenda item, so maybe I'll bring it up under old new business. Any, anything else that people want to, any other comments on the, on the town meeting review agenda item?
I think, I just want to say that we will be doing a reverse nine-one-one to get this date out. We need to talk about postcards and mailings and do we need to re-mail the warrant and all of that stuff. So that is on my mind, on my agenda, how we get the word out to people. Because we did say May fourth on Saturday, people may already have that on their calendar, may not be listening. So anyone in this room who's listening today, April twenty-seventh, if you can get that word out, the town will be doing their best effort to be getting that word out in as many ways as we can. And also contacting as many organizations to see if they would be willing to move their events.
And you reminded me of a point that, I think you, Kristen, and other people have made. So we have these additional weeks to prepare. You know, obviously that wasn't plan A for us, but since we have them, if there are communication clarity items, things that weren't clear before, please send them in to us. We can take advantage of the time to do additional clarifying communication if there are any questions. And so I think we will, we will work on the best way to do that. I think there were a couple of things that got clarified approaching the town meeting and we may, you know, create some additional sort of summary or communication that will get out to people to help them understand and be better able to navigate the meeting.
Tom?
Yeah, Chris?
Kristen, do you know how many people do you get contacted by the reverse nine-one-one?
Yes, I got that information this afternoon from the Communications Department. Let me just pull that up. So right now we have over twelve thousand people signed up for the RAVE system, that's businesses and residents. We anticipate that we have about eight hundred businesses and about fifty-three hundred residents. There's also about fifteen hundred opt-in numbers that we don't know if they are residents or businesses, they've opted in themselves. So we would definitely get about six thousand or more residents, we believe.
That's great. It's probably one of our best methods of getting the word out, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Chris, do you have a question on this?
Yeah. Chris Clones, Texas Rowood. I just have a question. Now that the town meeting is being postponed and held in April, and you asked for input, I think, from the residents and so forth, is the warrant and the motions documents that have been published, are those cast in concrete? Or is there time for people who want to modify the amount of the override? Is there opportunity for them to be meeting? I mean, I've seen a lot of questions, people asking, you know, there's three million dollars in reserves, could they be used? You know, could we do this? Can we substitute that? Is there time to do any of that or are we just going with what we have today?
I think the warrant is closed, and so I think the options people would have would be the same they would have had on Saturday. They can bring forward amendments or motions on the floor of the meeting, but in terms of the warrant, the warrant, at this point, is closed.
Okay, so it's the same, same warrant and motions for the April twenty-seventh?
Exactly, it'd be the same, but a little bit, so people would still have the opportunity, but the format they'd have to approach it through is.
I think that will help clarify it for people because I think a lot of people are thinking, they might want to change some things.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, we are moving on to our seven-thirty agenda item, which is review the ballot. Question on May seventh, annual town election ballot pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one C. So Kristen has circulated draft language. Let me just, let me just explain what this is because we all have a copy of this. So if you're, if you're looking at this, the question had been, shall the town of Westford be allowed to assess an additional six point eight million in real estate and property taxes for the purposes of funding municipal and school operating expenses for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four? We're proposing to change the motion to break it into two. So as you may recall, there, there were, of the first four motions, the first three were, the first was basically the fiscal, approving the fiscal twenty-five budget proposal and an override funding that would meet that budget shortfall of forty-two, four point two million dollars. That was article one. Article two and three created the stabilization fund and then would vote two point six million dollars into the stabilization fund to address basically the fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight challenges. What we're proposing is to break on the ballot that people would vote on on May seventh or in early voting into two. So the first question would be, I move the select board vote to place the following ballot on question on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, annual town election ballot pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter fifty-nine, twenty-one C, proposition to an F. First question would be, shall the town of Westford be allowed to assess an additional four point two million in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding municipal and school operating expenses for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four? So that's fiscal twenty-five as we've been discussing in our budget documents and our presentations to the public. That'd be question one, as we're currently proposing it. And then the second would be, I move the select board vote to place the following ballot question on the, well, this is our motion tonight. So the actual ballot question would be question two, shall the town of Westford be allowed to assess an additional two point six million in real estate and property taxes for the purposes of funding the override stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four? So again, the purpose then would be to fund into the stabilization fund for the purposes that we've discussed. So the change is basically taking six point eight and breaking it to two, and that is basically to have it mirror what is in the article one and then two, three blocks more closely. Before, there was a little bit of a mismatch where you could end up with, you know, yeses and nos, it didn't align and produce a result that we could move forward with. In this case, basically the questions on the ballot would mirror the motions that we would have in town meeting. And that's, that's the reason for breaking them into two. So with that explanation, let me, let me open up to the board for questions or comments. Yes?
Okay, so I have a question. Hypothetically.
Yes.
Let us suppose that an override passes at town meeting, but the override that passes is five million dollars, okay? It gets amended on the floor, it's five million dollars, and we're going to break it up, say, three and two. What happens to the ballot when this ballot, when these ballot questions don't reflect what happened on the floor of town meeting?
So that has happened in other communities in the past because sometimes the ballot happens in advance of the town meeting and vice versa. We would not tax to the levy limit, we would only tax to the five million because we don't have that in the budget.
I get that we'll only tax to the levy, but if people are going to the ballot and they're seeing the six point eight on the ballot and they know that at town meeting we've only passed five, then they're going to vote no, probably, both of these. And then where, then where are we? Because then we have to call another special election?
Then we have to call another election?
Yes.
That's exactly right. So just the sequence here, just if everyone's listening, so four point two for fiscal twenty-five, two point six for stabilization. Let's say that on the town floor it changed and it was four point zero or three point five, some other number for one and for two, some other number than two point six. We would communicate that we can only tax to the levy approved at town meeting and we would encourage people to vote as they wish, but know that if they voted yes on question one, if town meeting had approved a lesser amount, we could only tax to that levy amount. So we would tax to the lower amount, the amount that was approved at town meeting in that case example. If it came back with nos, then we would call a special election, which I think is forty-five days later or something, maybe forty-five plus a couple of days later, and we would match exactly the language on the ballot to what had happened at town meeting.
Right, and at your next meeting, you will be signing the warrant for the May seventh election, so there is not time to change it between.
Well, I understand.
Yes, no, I knew, I was saying more for the public.
I understand the timing issue and I know that we're, you know, we're up against that and I appreciate that, but.
Yeah, it's a good scenario to think about. It is the scenario that you have anytime you would do an override because you're always facing this issue where you've got this offset in timing.
Like, for example, Groton and Dunstable have their town meeting tonight and their election is next Tuesday as well. So if their override gets through, they'll, they'll be in that similar boat.
Right, so, Chris, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I heard your words, but I have no clue how to really interpret that, and I don't expect you to explain it now. All I'm saying is that anybody listening to this meeting may be confused as all get out on what's happening. So I think that when you come to whatever your decision is, that it be made very clear in some kind of a notice, either on the website or that voters understand, you know, when they vote at town meeting, what they're voting on and then when they go to the ballot, what that means and, you know, because this is, we're getting complex here.
Okay, and just so I understand, you're responding just to the, to what I read as the motions, not this scenario that we've been talking about, Andrea and I have been talking about.
Well, I don't know about, you know. I'm confused and I suspect that anybody listening will be confused and we won't know. You know, if town meeting votes a different override, then how do you phrase the question and what do you vote on the ballot? And, you know, all of this is like, it's getting to be really Greek.
Right, okay. So, so point taken. We will take extra effort to communicate what the votes mean and what the vote means on the ballot and also to explain, particularly in real time if it occurs. We'll, we'll take every effort to try and make this as clear as we possibly can.
Tom, we have a comment and I really think that this is apropos. Groton's town meeting was postponed to May due to overcapacity.
Oh, jeez. Welcome to the crowd.
I just thought that people should, you know.
Good, good to know.
There's one other comment online if you.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead.
So Megan O'Connell writes, if town meeting voted on a lower amount as discussed and the ballot stays as is and was approved, could the select board call a special town meeting to amend the budget onwards? We just said yes, we could.
Yes, you could, you could do either way. So you, you could, so to Megan's question, so now the scenario is a lower amount's been approved at town meeting than's on the ballot. So you could do one of two things. You could call, if it passed at town meeting, failed at the ballot, you could call for a new election and make the ballot match what had been voted at town meeting. So people would have a chance to vote directly on that. You could also call a special town meeting and see if you could get town and basically propose that town meeting adjust what town meeting had voted on. Well, no, you still need a vote at the ballot. So I'm not sure there's an approach you could take there to call. To Megan's question, you could call another town meeting if you wanted to, but you can't do, you can't change the levy without a vote at the ballot. So if, in the scenario we're talking about, passed at town meeting, fails at the ballot, you don't solve any problem or move any forward progress by calling another town meeting. You could do that, but you wouldn't solve any problem, you need a vote. So what you would probably do is call for special election, match what's on the ballot to what was voted at town meeting, give the voters an opportunity to vote directly on that. Okay, yes, Chris?
Is it legal for the town to put up notices at the polling stations just indicating, you know, or give direction if we are in a scenario where the numbers don't sort of match?
You mean sort of an explainer that says, if you voted on this and it was successful, because of the vote at town meeting, the town of Westford would only vote, would only have authorization to tax to levy amount that was approved at town meeting?
Correct.
I think you.
We will check that because I don't know what documentation Cannon, Cannon cannot be at the polls, but we will check that with town council.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. We can certainly put that on our website and news flash and things like that, but I think there is a.
Maybe people can hand out flyers outside the polling limit or whatever it is that we have or.
So it makes sense to seek counsel about how close to the actual polling station you could do that, but we would communicate in all the ways we can.
Right.
Well, I think information's good, we just can't advocate.
Uh, right. All we would be doing is laying out the sequence of events of what we have the ability to do or not.
We can give the information out, we just can't advocate.
Definitely not advocate, just clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
If the scenario arises.
Because it's, it's a, it's a good question, so, yep, okay. I think we've got that one, so thank you for that question. Any other questions about this? We will need to vote on this, obviously, but any questions from the board or the public about this proposed modification to the ballot language? Okay, if, unless there's any other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, and what we're doing is we're approving the ballot language as, as I've just described it. All in favor? Okay.
So two questions.
Yeah, this is.
I'll move this, I move this.
This should be two votes.
Two votes, yeah.
Okay, two questions, two votes, so, okay, so let's, so Andrea's just made the motion for the second question. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor of the second question? Okay, thank you. Do you have what you need for that?
I do, thank you, yep. Send that to the clerk's office and then at your next meeting, you will sign the warrant for the ballot.
Okay, and next up was our seven forty-five item, presentation from the Westford Recycling Plan on Reducing Waste, from Ken Teal. Welcome, Ken.
Can I use this small bench here?
Yes, please, yeah, yeah, welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, thanks for having me here and thank you for reaching out to the Recycling Commission to take a look at different things in regard to the solid waste issues that we have in front of us. So we're very glad to do it and hopefully we can clarify what we're recommending here. The first thing that we wanted to bring forward is, you had asked us to take a look at barrel limits and we made a motion, as you can see from the materials provided for today, back in January, and it was in your past unanimously that we moved from a three-barrel trash limit to a two-barrel trash limit. And then to have, to investigate an option for any overflow on how that would go. Now that, we didn't define it, but we strongly recommend it. We know that it went to, we used to be four, we went to three five years ago, and so we've been at three, but we really believe that like other towns, we can switch to two barrels and we'll just have to adjust it. We think with our current hauler, with the hauler starting seven-one, they'll be able to help us to manage that and we think it's a great opportunity for us to move to two-barrel limit such as other towns because we're, we're an outlier. So that's, that's our strong recommendation, that's unanimous from Recycling Commission.
And just the, the idea of overflow, some towns have an ability to purchase special overflow bags. You didn't define that or speak to that, but you proposed there'd be some method for people to have overflow.
That's correct, and one of the things we're going to talk about later, because one of the things we talked about in January was looking at bulk stickers and all we said is, we think you should, you should raise them. Now, in, in the next meeting, we started a subcommittee and we actually investigated it and looked at towns that are like us and look for opportunities to deal with our bulk. What we're going to do is we have a bulk, we're going to be talking about a bulk sticker piece, but maybe within that bulk sticker process, that might be a way for people to deal with overflow. If they have overflow, there's a bulk sticker option for trash overflow. But that's something that we can investigate, we can work with Mike, I think Mike and I are going to be, you know, joined at the hip as we move into July first. as we move into July 1st. And, um, congratulations. But, uh, but, but I think it'll be a good opportunity. So that's our first one. The, the second one really continued, the bulk stickers continued in March, ended up finalized in March. So I'll just move beyond that. But I do want to state something on, on composting, which is something I sent back in January following our meeting. I know Scott and, you know, Tom, we've, we've talked about composting and I've said, spoken to Andrea also. And we know how important that is. I think our town, not necessarily for 7-1, but in our future, we need to take a look at the opportunity to require everybody to do composting and essentially ban compostable food waste from trash. And that certainly, it's a, it's a big change, but composting really represents a tremendous opportunity for us. We're seeing this with our, our current efforts on composting. Let me just look at these little numbers here. So I'm not going to see my little, my little stat sheet, but that's okay. What you, what we're finding with our composting program right now, the curbside one, is it's averaging about 11 pounds per family per week. So what that really works out to is if every four families is one ton per year. So that's, that's a number to deal with. So as you advance the program on compost, you can see what it would do. The number I use when I do composting demonstrations is I say, you know, between 12 and 14 pounds, but let's use 11. But if it was 11 and we got everybody to get involved in the program and be doing it, that's going to be a direct diversion. And basically with compost, with compostable materials, we are sending to the incinerator water. It's primarily water. And if you do home composting, you see how it compresses. It just, you put it in there and it gets smaller and smaller and it's, it's, it's a great thing. Our trash is so small, primarily because no food waste goes in there. We know for a couple, 10 pounds a week would be a lot. You know, you'd see it in your way. So that's something we think the town needs to consider, but we're not recommending that for 7-1. But now I've given you my, my speech on that. On the 14th, we had, um, we got the feedback from our subcommittee to take a look at bulk stickers. And when, and they did their, did their due diligence and did comparison with, um, you know, fellow communities, sister communities. And the recommendation is that bulk stickers be increased from $5 to $15. One of the concerns raised on the subcommittee is, do we need to show what the effect of inflation is getting from 5 to 15? And we didn't do that. It's been $5 since I moved to the town in 1995. So $5 is the bulk sticker fee. So I think that any reasonable person can extrapolate that over, over time and inflation. So we think the 15 is reasonable and it's in the middle of towns that we compare ourselves to. So we think that that policy could work. And we also recommend that when people have a bulk item, that they schedule it with the, schedule it with the hauler. And Harvey is, is familiar with that, as opposed to putting it out on the curb with a sticker slapped on it. And this allows the hauler to plan pickups. They can schedule it. They can plan the truck for it and do it pretty, pretty easily. And I, and I think that will be a great opportunity for people to do it. It's certainly a big jump of $5, but we think that that will be a reasonable effect as we, um, we present it to the residents. This is all in the midst of, of the budget right now. So everybody's looking at, we've got this override budget and all this stuff. But one of the things, when I've talked to Kristen and I shared a concern we had in that regard, the reality is people will only be taxed on what we spend. So if we, if we find methods that reduce costs, we will, you know, that, that's, you're not going to be paid, you're not going to be taxed any more than that. So it's not going to result in additional costs that we have now a slush fund. We're still basing it upon, you know, actual results. Is that, do I have that correct, Chris? And I appreciate that you, you know, helped me with that because I came into you just a little bit jiggy about it, okay? But I wanted to make sure that we covered it. So these are the two primary things that we want to present to you and I'll answer any questions on them. One is the, um, two-barrel limit and the other is on bulk stickers at $15.
And, and the required compost, that's a different idea for later. So you're entertaining it, but we'll talk about that.
I want to get it in everybody's thoughts and I'll state it on here. And anybody reads this knows that that's where we're going. And composting is really a wonderful thing. I used to be more active in it back in the 90s. I was environmental director for Verizon. Uh, we were Nine X, you know, then Bell, you know, we can't, couldn't keep a job. Then Bell, then Bell Atlantic and then Verizon. But we, as we dealt with this, there's some tremendous opportunities. We were composting foam books back in the day. So, you know, there, there's a, you know, I don't know, you've got to think about that a little bit, but it, but it worked. It actually worked. We did a lot of good things with it. So in any event, I want us to move in that direction.
Yeah. Well, thank you and thank you, the committee, for the work. Why don't we entertain questions from the board and then any from the public? And then we can come back and ask the pleasure of the board in terms of where we'd like to go. So first questions or comments from the board. Chris?
Just a point of clarification. If I understood you correctly, you said one mechanism a person or a family might have, if they, if we did the two barrels and they, they had extra trash, say it's the holidays or whatnot, birthday party, that you're advocating that they would use the bulk collection?
But, well, what you, this, and this isn't something that we specifically voted on, but we talked about it afterwards. I think it, it, it would be a special sticker and maybe we develop a special amount for that versus having bags. Like, like Chumpsford, for example, has a $2 bag. So that you have to have a mechanism to get the bag, get it to the consumer or the resident and then have it used. But something along those lines. $15 may be a lot for a bulk sticker for an extra barrel of trash. However, um, it certainly would be, and it would make you really think about the trash that we have.
If I understand correctly, so if we did what Chumpsford did, you might go to Market Basket, if you had a bulk item, you'd buy $15. If you had an extra bag, you'd buy a sticker that might say extra bag, that would be $2 or $3.
So that could be, that could be the mechanism.
Stick it on the bag. So when the trash, when Harvey's coming by, they, they say, okay, well, there's a bag. There's nothing on it. I'm not picking it up. Or, oh, there's a bag. It's got the extra bag sticker.
That's right.
Good enough, we'll take it. Okay.
And in this, by the way, in this process, what we're expecting from Harvey, and that's something that, that should have been happening all along, but it hasn't really actively happened, is trash needs to be, uh, not, it needs to be rejected if it's full of compost, it's full of recyclable items. And we, we need a hauler that really knows both sides of the coin and they can take a look at it and assess it. And when you see a barrel full of cardboard and plastics and bottles, you know, it shouldn't be in trash. I walk through town and I'm retired, so I have a little more time, although I've got a lot of activities I'm in. And I, and I do, I, I can't help myself. I, I do look and, and, and I get a little bit fussed.
You dumpster dive.
I do not dumpster dive. I, I, with my mind, I do.
You glance.
And I have very good vision corrected with my glasses.
So just, just to be clear, this may be a process improvement for the future, but this is separate than the proposals that we're talking about tonight. The, the idea that we might train or create a process that Harvey may say, I reject that recycling because it's got trash in it or vice versa.
Yeah, that reason, but, but they're going to be helping us with this whole thing.
Okay. So we may come back another time.
There's also a grant program that does that as well. You can, you have a grant and you hire the people and they go out and they audit the trash.
And that would be great too.
So we can look into that as well.
Okay, great.
Okay. But maybe just for the two things, the, the two things we're focusing on tonight.
I went off topic. Sorry.
No, no problem, Ken. Any questions, John?
What do the sticker fees go to? Do they just go to the freight, the cost of, uh, trash or?
Yeah, they go into the, they go to the account for the, I mean, Mike and I have been talking about, we don't have an enterprise fund right now for trash and recycling. It just would go back to the general fund and we would use that in the next year to fund the trash and recycling program.
And I think the amount was $40,000 last year. It's, it's.
Or the $5 stickers.
For bulk stickers, yeah.
Yes. The total amount. So multiply that by three.
Triple, yeah. Okay.
Yep. So not, not nothing. Um, any questions from the public about?
No, it was Scott. I think Scott.
Oh, sorry. Scott, please.
I guess, wait, what did you say? What's, what's, what's?
I, I don't think we'll probably, so please, hear me out. You can decide if, if we agree or disagree. I think both of these ideas need a little bit of development and a little bit of town participation. So I'm proposing that the two-barrel limit with some defined mechanism to handle overflow would need to come back to us. We could do the bulk waste change. I guess I would propose that both of those come back at the same time after, after town's processed and thought about it. Just what, what's the plan? When would we implement? What's the cutoff date? All the details. So I'm proposing that we talk about it tonight, but what I was going to propose at the end is that we ask town to develop these ideas and bring them back either at our next meeting or the meeting after for a decision.
I mean, the, the bulk fees, I think, is a small brainer. Um, I want, I want to know what, what, what the plan is. If you don't, if you, if you can turn the two barrels, there has to be a plan for overflow. We don't have one, so.
And if the board, if the pleasure of the board is to, to split them and dress them.
My thought with the bulk, I, I agree with Scott. I think raising the bulk fees to $15 really seems to me after, you've been here since 1999. I've been here since earl, earlier and it's always been $5. So I think raising that, I agree with you. But I think we need to give people notice. And so my thought was that we don't do it till July 1st.
With the new hauler.
You know, at the beginning of our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yes, it's reasonable.
I, I think that's great too. Why don't we go ahead and hear from the public and then we'll come back and we can decide what we want to do, want to do on these two things. So Paul?
Paul Fosbender, 14 Texas Road. I may be missing some context, but the idea of the bulk stickers sounds really intriguing. I'm curious, is this a huge problem in town? You know, is this 30 or 40 a week or 1,000 a week or 5,000 a week? Do we have trends over the last few years? Is the problem getting bigger? And is the goal of raising the fee to raise money to offset some costs somewhere? Or is it to discourage people from putting things in bulk storage? In which, which case?
Or both.
Or both. So the question becomes, is $15 enough, depending on what your objective is?
That's a, that's a good question. So, so $40,005, so it's 80,000 stickers a year.
Eight, eight thousand. Eight thousand stickers a year.
Eight thousand stickers a year, just to give you a sense. I, I don't know if the committee looked at, at, uh, sort of the intent behind it. It seems like all those are legitimate things, reducing overall waste, just being paid fairly. I think it costs us more than $5 to deal with something. I think it's just not economically priced. I don't know if you have any take on, on why.
The biggest concern is diversions. We were looking at that. There are towns that do charge a higher amount, but the majority are probably in the 10 to $20 range. And we think our peers are within, within, are there. So we chose the 15 and we thought that was reasonable because it's a significant jump. So we have, maybe what we do is look at this each year and we see how it works. We saw it works with Harvey, but it would be part of our contract with Harvey. So I don't think this, this doesn't incur an additional cost for us. Is that correct?
Bulk stickers, raising this, no.
Because that's all part of what we've contracted.
They will pick up whatever they.
They're going to get whatever we have for bulk stickers. So there's not a savings to be made from it. But the biggest thing is, eh, eh, part of it is that diversion. It's going to be an opportunity for people. Let me think a little bit more because $5 is nothing nowadays.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Paul?
Pretty much. And I think, uh, uh, it's, it's really helpful to know that there are other programs that they're working on as well to divert this stuff into reuse type things and so forth. So I assume that looking at the performance over the years, we can sort of gauge where things are going and, and modify the plan accordingly.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Please.
Bill, a lot of 5290 Road. Um, I understand it's only $15, but I think people are going to be telling you that they're asking for $6.8 million override and it's just another tax. That's how people are going to look at it. I'm just, I agree, we need to divert things from trash. There is an issue, but that's how a lot of people in the town are going to look at it. Right.
So I, I think, I think that's probably a comment for us. So thanks, thanks. Thank you. Thank you both for that.
And then one thing you want to think about is the existing stickers. If people buy a couple and then have them, the word needs to get out.
They'll be able to be used. It's like a stamp.
So they'll be, okay.
There could be a rush to the market.
Yeah.
And that's, that's okay too, right? And then, uh, just a comment on the compost. When I moved to town, I went to one, I forget what they were. One of the days I got one of those compost bins. I compost myself. So I've been composting for years. So with the surveys that we've talked about in the past, I know you have concrete based on the vendor that you use, but it might be nice to see who else out there is composting. My neighbor is too. So there are other people that are at home composting that are, it might be good to just see how many people are doing it.
Yeah. Community survey. Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, that's good.
Another.
Elizabeth Sawyer, um, 6 Holly, member of the recycling commission and member of the subcommittee that looked at the bulky waste. A few, a few other points that I, I think are important is that, um, the, the goal here is to also capture residents' attention on just how many alternatives there are to using the trash. What we observe is that we have positioned Westford as making trash the easiest, fastest, cheapest way to do attic cleanouts, redecorating. Um, you don't like a couch, it goes at the curb with very little effort in the $5 sticker. So part of what we think other towns are doing is elevating donation, not just diversion, but donation for all the items that still have real use. And so the goal really isn't to change, you know, who's paying for this. It's, it's to reduce what is being set out as trash and to isolate that to what is used up, used out and really has no other alternative. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you and thank you for your work on the committee. Other, uh, Scott?
I, I get that, but it's also the case that if you look at our tipping fees since 1985, whatever it is, they've gone up by a factor of probably 500%. So they grew up by, you know, 515 is actually a fraction of what we're paying increase tipping costs. So if we look at every other thing we do in town with permits, we look at what's happened to the market value of those permits and we adjust accordingly. So yes, diversion is, is a good plan, but also I think it's fairness to, um, you know, the, the cost. It's, it's, it's time.
Other questions or comments from the public? Uh, Chris, and then if you can tell, let me know if there's anything online.
I just wanted to have Megan's. That was, she has a question online. If we could have the commission weigh in on that.
Okay.
So the question is from Megan O'Connell. I would suggest the board consider that not all households are the same size. A two-barrel limit for a two-person household would be much easier to manage than a two-barrel limit for an eight-person household. If the board wants to move to a two-barrel limit, I would urge the board to consider methods to take larger families into account.
So my question was, did, did, did the commission think about that? Did they deliberate at all about that situation?
I think we, we did. We, we looked at our, what our individual histories were. We didn't, we didn't poll the community and find out how many people we've have in each piece. We're just looking at what our experience is with trash in our various households. Elizabeth, did you want to speak to that?
I did.
You did? Okay, thank you.
It, it is an unfortunate reality. Um, Westford again is an outlier in how little we have bumpers around our trash. There are municipalities that don't put a single tax dollar to trash. There are towns like Concord that don't do bulky waste. Um, it, it is going to be an adjustment. It is going to be a shift. I don't claim for individual households that I know what that will be. I request that we not assume it is just a matter of size. I think it is a couple of factors. And one is awareness on all the ways that trash can be diverted versus not. In my neighborhood, um, a family of five that has three athletes and coaches and the parties, there, there are one barrel of trash family year round. Holidays, one barrel year round. So, so there I would call a large family with lots of people and, and they don't throw out a lot. I don't claim to know how. I have not been peering into their barrel like Ken, but, um, but, but I, I think it's just a men, mention of, um, there are a couple of reasons why people might throw out a lot of trash. Family size may be a factor. It may not be why a, a family of two throws out three barrels every week right now.
Thanks. Thanks. So, so, uh, maybe accompanying, uh, any change with some sort of guidance for ways that families can manage it through compost, through recycling, et cetera. Okay. Any other comments? Sounds like we got everyone online.
There's a comment related to the town meeting date, but not related to this.
Okay. So in terms of pleasure of the board, my proposal is that we, uh, my proposal was that we get both these ideas a little bit further developed and come back to them, um, just with specifics and dates and exactly how we're going to do it. And, uh, or if it's the pleasure of the board, we could, we could split the two. I think the, uh, the barrel limit needs more development for sure.
Yeah, I think the barrel needs more developmental.
I think the, I think come back, close.
I.
More information there on it.
On, on the barrels or on both.
On both.
So the only reason for, I would say to come, just to wait, is it?
So the only reason for, I would say to come, just to wait, is if, just to, do we need an answer for what you do if you have more trash that fits in two barrels?
Well, I'm not proposing that we go forward with the barrels.
No, we get barrels.
I know, but in order, so if, if, I guess the way I look at it is, if we don't have another mechanism to deal with that and the only opportunity is to use this bulk sticker at fifteen dollars, are we okay with that? I'm assuming we will find a solution. I'm just calling that out.
I mean, you know, I, I'm not going to push it. I'm fine with waiting, so.
Yeah, it's July first, take the fucking, I, I, I could, I could wait.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm fine with waiting.
All right, well, go on, we just.
We will develop.
Then I, we thank you and so let's get this on an agenda item in June.
No, much before June, because we, we need to do it in April.
No, no, I, no, Tom, I'm, I'm willing to, to relay it, but I don't want to wait till June.
We need to do it in April because.
Why don't we, why don't we turn this around? However long you need to take to develop a plan that gets to the details.
We're going to do it in April because we need to get flyers out for the public throughout the month of May and June.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Next agenda item is, thank you, Ken. Next agenda item is the consent agenda. Request to approve the following. We have a banner request. The event is the Westford Act in Littleton Knights Football and Cheer. Applicant is Carrie Tonks. And the dates are April first, April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Location, First Parish Church. Another banner request is the Memorial Day Ceremony. The applicant is our very own Ryan Cobley, veteran service officer. The date is May twenty-first through May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Location is the J.B. Fletcher Library. We also have town common and ban stand requests. An event is the Armenian Program in Flag Raising in Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide. The applicant is the Armenian National Committee of Merrimack Valley. The date is April nineteenth. The event, another event is the Mental Health Awareness Month, which is to place flags on the common. The applicant is Community Wellness Coordinator, Nicole Aviolette. The dates are May first through May tenth, twenty twenty-four, and the time is continuous. Another event, Memorial Day Ceremony. The applicant is Veteran Services Ryan Cobley. Again, the date is Sunday, May twenty-sixth, and the time is eight AM to two PM. And finally, an event, Concert on the Common. The applicant is Alice Phelan on behalf of Parish Center of the Arts. The dates are July thirteenth, twentieth, August third and tenth, twenty twenty-four, with rain dates of the fourteen, July fourteenth, twenty-first, August fourth, and August eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Time is twelve to seven PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Old, new business. We have a request.
I will move to appoint Chris Parrows as our liaison to the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail.
I will second that, as long as it doesn't go to his head.
Okay, any comment or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And Kristen, it's over to you.
Wait, wait, Tom, you said you had something else you were going to bring up on the floor.
Well, the, here's, here's, here's the thing I was going to bring up. So we had talked at various times about how we wanted to organize the, the review of the budget. So the budget was a continuous study and continuous actions. And we had discussed basically doing a quarterly review. And so I just wanted to, to say out loud again with this group, one proposal is that we'd have the three boards together. We would pick goals that we would ask the town staff to work on in between those quarterly meetings. Examples of things might be update on the healthcare trust, progress on consolidation of the motor pool, cons- progress on joint cooperation between in-town schools to be more efficient with resources. Basically, we would pick agenda items from the budget task force and from other active budget items. We'd ask for a report on a quarterly basis. Part of that meeting would be to pick the targets for the next meeting. So I want to float that as a structure and then ask the town staff, ask Kristen to basically, if, if we liked that idea, to go ahead and propose the first date and the first set of agenda items we would discuss in that quarterly meeting in an upcoming, upcoming meeting. So if, if people are, feel like that's in alignment with what we've talked about earlier and seems like good practice, we could go ahead and ask Kristen to do that. We could also schedule it for another agenda item if people want to think about it more. Chris?
So was the idea that we would roll it into an existing select board meeting and just have the other two boards join us? Or would this would be a complete separate meeting that we would have quarterly?
You know, I, I didn't have a firm idea. So one proposal could be, do we do it as a joint session on a select board meeting night? Or do we convene a, a separate meeting once a quarter? I think there would be enough content to have it be a separate meeting. So we could, we could make that one of the items we're considering.
I'm not a huge fan of extra meetings, but I have gotten off as is. Would it be, would it be, could we try it with rolling it into, you know, on a slow, slow meeting?
Sure. Yeah, we could make that our starting point.
Not that we have that many slow meetings, but.
Yeah, we could, we could make that a starting point is to try to, try to schedule that as part of a standing.
I also think that, you know, while we're going through the normal budgetary review process, right, that we probably don't need to have a quarterly meeting. That would serve. So we're really looking at maybe just two or three throughout the year, right?
Yeah, I think you're right. We, when we're doing the budget, that covers a lot of it. So it would be sort of three-month increments around the clock from budget time. Does that seem like a reasonable, reasonable approach to request from Kristen?
I like the idea of getting updates and seeing how we're doing and maybe being able to look forward and see the train coming down the track. It might be rails next time. So just by keeping up to date a little bit better and having those kind of reports, I think it'll enable, enable us to look at, make, be a bit more predictive. So.
Yeah, well, I think three things. So one is certainly, my, my, my first concern was that we are monitoring our budget at a higher frequency than we have been, which is typically, I know we always check it monthly, but in terms of, of, as a collectively, FinCom, Select Board, School Committee, you know, quarterly, how are we doing as opposed to our, our marathons once a year in the fall? So I think that's, that's important. Yeah, I am worried that we don't, we have a propensity to create plenty of documents and we don't ever follow through on. So to the degree that we have a sort of standing set of meetings to push us forward on this budget task force recommendation, so anything else new that comes along, that makes sense. But also we'd like to add to that, that we, you know, are tracking other towns' labor contracts as they complete them. Because we have this, again, we, every three years we do our typically negotiations. That's when we pull, you know, the contracts and find that, oh, we are okay or, or not. And if we're doing it every year, we'd know if we're getting into trouble down the road a year or two before we get there.
Yes, Chris?
See, the chair, the FinComs here, want to just ask for their.
Sure, yeah. Christina, please. What, what, if we're going to ask Kristen to lay out a, a schedule and a proposal, what else should we include or not include?
So I, I guess I'd like to get a little clarification on just the way this would work. Are you envisioning that the three boards would, would get together at those quarterly meetings? And then just town staff would be doing work? Or was it, is, would it be a little bit more similar looking to a budget task force where you've got other individuals actually doing work?
I think what I was thinking is that if primarily the roadmap of what we'd like the town to be looking at for efficiency gains is in the budget task force report, in terms of like deep dive, going to look at other communities, pulling source data and doing comparisons, doing, you know, comparison benchmark stuff. And so I think at least for a while, there's plenty for us to work on there. But I think it would be very important to have, maybe in the joint chairs meeting or some other format, to downselect and say, okay, of all the things we could, we're working on, these three or four things are the items of greatest concern. These are the things we'd like a more detailed report on in our next quarter.
I think that's, I think I'd like to see a little bit of both or a little bit of all of it. I think there's probably areas where it would make sense to have a smaller group, whether it's in a chairs meeting or, or something, where we can really sort of dive in and then give direction to staff after that, but then update all of the, all of the other members.
I think that, that could be fine. So one thing we could do is, is decide in a meeting, yes, we'd like a working group composed of some selection of these three bodies to go ahead and dig in on this one because we don't know as much as we'd like or we want to look into other best practice options or something like that.
Yeah, I just know after, working on the budget task force, there were, there were just a lot of complexities to try to sift through and to try to sit here with three boards without having some of that work done ahead of time. I, I think is going to get a little, could get a little difficult.
Yeah, I'm thinking that the quarterly is more of an accountability, like we're, we're watching a presentation where they say last time, first of all, here's the state of the town, here's the state of the schools, here's things that have changed that are important for us to notice. Here's the five things we were asked to look at last time. We did this study.
Yep.
And we think we can accomplish these things. Now what about next time? And that could be an opportunity where we say, we need a small group to look again at labor contracts because we know that they've been resettled. Or we need a working group to look at, do we have the right market basket set up for the town? It's been this way for a long time. So I, I think there could be space for sort of special projects.
Okay. Yeah, because I wouldn't want to put that all on, all on town staff. There's, there's a lot. I mean, and it, and it may, there may be definitely legwork that other people could do.
We have bike now.
Full-time job. Yeah, no, I, I think it's a great idea. I think the, I think the hope was that if, if as a group we pick, there's important areas we want to do a deep dive on, let's get a sub, subcommittee to work on that.
Because I think other things may, because other things may come up, too. I mean, the budget task force, we had, I don't know how many months. So we touched on a lot of things, but I'm sure there's other things out there that we could investigate.
Right. I, I think what I was, want to be careful of is not recreating the wheel.
Sure.
But you're right, that should be a living document. So we couldn't, a quarterly review, say, hey, you know what, we never really got to this one. Or I've heard this has changed. Let's go refresh subsection three B or some new thing we didn't look at before.
Yeah.
So I think that's a great idea. So, John? John, I think, Chris?
Yeah, I think this really should be a select board-led meeting with the school committee and finance committee addressing issues that have come forward of concern, looking forward. It could be the contracts, it could be inflation, it could be other things. And I think you kind of need to get an idea of what kind of category, categories we want to look at. You know, to get a better feel for that. And I don't see our committee necessarily doing a lot of the, the work. I would see that being something that the select board would take leadership in and how we move the town forward on budget, whatever, organization.
Yep.
I mean, that's kind of the, it's your brainchild, right? No, I, I just want to.
It's come up from a bunch of places. How do we keep the accountability and the focus high? We've signed up for some big cost reductions. How do we make sure they get, they're real?
Kind of get an idea of the focus. What are we going to focus on?
Just following up on what you, you're coming, you know, we've still got cost reductions that we're going to have to do in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven. So having this committee hopefully stay ahead of the game, so to speak, and, you know, anticipate what might be coming or what's, what that might be coming or where we are, I think is going to be helpful as we plan for FY twenty-six and twenty-seven and the cuts that we still have to make.
And we, as soon as the budget task force work ended, we started tracking where we are in some of these things. So we would have an update for this board probably in the next two months to be able to already report on the things that we are, are working on today. So I don't want to let the board think that the budget task force report had been sitting on the shelf. There's been things that we have been moving forward. It's been a slower pace because the budget has been our focus for that budget development. But I see this ramping up even more over the next six months.
And we're going to have that strategic plan forward.
Yes.
And this would be kind of a good way to move that forward. Because that would be one of the things we'd be looking at, how we change the year made, how we move forward. So that'd be a good way, a good part of it, I think. Okay.
Well, it, it feels like we're in consensus. So I'll work with Kristen and we'll pick a time to have the first one of these. Probably in a little while.
Tom, I have one of them with, one other thing for new business.
Yes, please.
Kristen has been here for more than a year now.
That is right.
And we have not done an evaluation of her.
You're exactly right.
We owe her that. And I understand and recognize and appreciate that we've all been caught up in the budget and that's been the focus and I got that. But I think we need to schedule, we all need to get our evaluations to you, Tom, and then we need to schedule time, I would say, either in our second April meeting or our first May meeting to do our evaluation of Kristen.
Yeah, fair point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other old or new business? Okay. Board reports or updates? We just did that. Town manager's report. Kristen?
All right. So for contracts, Clean Harbors for hazardous waste collection agreement day, this not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. That is the May fourth event. Emerging Compounds Treatment Technology for PFAS pilot study in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars by the Water Department.
Kristy?
Yes?
So I have, I'm renewing my request to the Water Department. I'm seeing contracts that are coming in for PFAS and evaluation and design and everything. I really want to see something from the Water Department that lays out exactly what's going to happen with PFAS and getting into what our costs and expenses are and what we're looking forward.
They're scheduled to come in, in April. So I previewed the presentation with them. They're refining that. They've already walked through the Water Commissioners with it, so they will be on one of your April meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything else?
Mayor Service Inc. for the cleaning and redevelopment of the Coat Well in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven fifty-five by the Water Department. And then purchase orders, Premier Mechanical LLC for two replacement air compressors for the Highway Garage in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars by the Facilities Department. Colonial Ford for an F-250 replacement of a vehicle in the amount of fifty-six thousand, five fifty-seven by the Public Works Department. That vehicle was in an accident earlier this year. So this is the replacement. And then Bergeron Protective Clothing for five sets of firefighting gear in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and six dollars by the Fire Department.
So presumably there's some insurance on that truck?
Yes, we did get insurance. The, this incorporates the insurance amount, but the insurance goes right into the general fund.
Insurance is about twenty-seven thousand, I think.
And there was another transfer that we, that we did.
So, sorry, you're saying it's fifty-six plus?
No, it's fifty-six total. Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
All in favor? Okay, correspondence?
Move to wait, reading sources.
All in favor? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Westford. Have a good evening.
Good night, Westford. Be safe.